I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I do not have any changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the February 6th city council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
I had just a technicality update. I need to know when before the meeting. He's got that.
And we need to know what that is.
I'm abstaining from one of the items.
You go ahead and clarify the correction you made.
The liquor license for the flat iron, that portion, it wasn't mentioned that I abstained from the last meeting.
So with that change, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, claims, bills in between $56,554.12.
Motion to approve.
That's not the right total. It's, I'm sorry, the other list, the smaller list you have.
Oh, I thought that was for claims.
$66,273, $279.
Alright, Misty, I missed them.
I'm sorry.
Oh, with the credit card?
Are you doing bills in between?
Yeah.
So bills in between is $123,632.12.
Still motion to approve.
Still so.
We get the second? I'm sorry, Andy.
Andy. Do you have it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So current claims is the $66,279.45. Misty gave you the update in, right before the meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Credit cards, $4,403.50. Motion to approve. Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I do not have anybody signed up for communications from the public, but if you would like to speak, now is the time. Just want to remind people who would like to speak, but please come to the microphone and let us know your name and your address. Is there anyone who wanted to speak during communications from the public?
Does this include about ordinances as well?
No. You can, well, is it the ordinance that's on the agenda?
Yes.
Probably be better to talk about it when we get to that point on the agenda. If that's okay with you. You're welcome to speak now, though.
I will be.
Okay. And I'll ask you to come to the mic when you do, okay? Alright, so I believe I do not have any communications from the public, so I'm going to move to personnel. It's all standard stuff, so I'd like to do A through K as one vote.
Motion to approve.
No?
No.
Okay. Do you want me to go through one by one?
We'll go, I think most of you do A through F and I through K.
Okay. A through F.
Motion to approve.
Second. On discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we've approved A through F, item G, Christopher Doty, police officer step increase, and Christopher Doty, police officer, last day effective 3/20 month.
I guess I have a problem giving the man a raise three days before he leaves. Because the only thing that that's going to do is whatever we figure out as his end payment when he leaves is going to be figured on his new wages and not the wages that he's been on for the last three or four years.
You're right, that's his annual step increase if we go.
I know, but I'm still saying that we've already run into that in a couple, two, three other instances as people get raises within a week of when they leave here and then when it comes time to figure out their vacation and sick leave and stuff, why that's all figured on their brand-new wage instead on the wage they were working at when they accumulated them.
I agree.
It should be clarified that he did put an advance note or a prolonged notice, so he did receive a different position approximately a month ago and this is that he set his termination date's last day at this time. So it's not necessarily as quick as it looks like on the agenda. There's about a month transition between when he found out he was leaving and when he set his last date.
What do you propose review because this was his scheduled step increase?
We just do not give him the step increase.
And then when he pays up, when we pay out his vacation and time when he leaves, it's based on the old rate versus the new rate.
Can we even legally do that? Because we say you get a-
Our policy is to do a step increase at each anniversary and this does satisfy his anniversary. The employee is in good standing with the city. This would be his regular scheduled anniversary date. It'd be irregular to do what's being proposed. There could be repercussions from that, but again, it's a council decision.
We would question our whole annual step increase policy, right?
Which questions the entire policy that we have.
Because you can't do one for one and not-
How much is this increase?
I wish I knew the exact amount to tell you, but it's not very much. It's from 95 to 98 percent top of scale.
Seems to me like we should stay with our rules as we have them and not change them just because he quit. That's my opinion.
I don't know that we can legally even do that. I mean, I agree, it's a little, we all kind of went, hmm, but-
You know, it's like violating an ordinance. You know, the policy has been set and should stay the way it is. And everything else could be the same way. So I would think it'd be an irregularity in voting against your own policy.
Georgia has joined us.
Are you there, Georgia?
Yes, I am.
Good.
Okay, Georgia, we are under personnel, items G and H, discussing Officer Christopher Doty.
Okay.
He gets a annual step increase on the 19th and he has taken a position with another city and his last day is effective the 21st. So basically, three days at the new wage, but again, this is based on his annual service date and we're discussing, you know, how the timing is a little unusual, but we're trying to figure out if we could even violate our policy of step increases on their anniversary date. And Carolyn had just made a statement that, you know, we should follow our policy, but Tim thinks it's a little unusual. And you're welcome to correct me in the summary.
What was the dollar amount, no one?
It appears that it's from a 96 or 95 percent current to 98 percent top of scale. Top of scale is 1960. If the math has been done correctly, it'd be about 60 cents as an increase in pay.
60?
60 cents per hour, yes.
I don't know if your mic's working.
The top ladder is closer.
I just have to restate that we have the policy. It's a new policy and in effect. And if we don't agree with it, we should change it. Otherwise, we have to accept where it stands.
We would probably have to accept where it stands for this person because this is the policy that's in place now.
That's right.
We can look at it and change it for anything in the future, but we can't for this instance.
But if it's a 60 cent increase, it really isn't a significant change or a significant impact to the city. I say we just leave him in good standings and wish him luck.
Well, I need to go into a public hearing in about 30 seconds, so-
Are we, will we yet, Tim?
Because I either need to wait until after the hearing or I need a motion to do something different than what's on the agenda.
I motion to approve.
Also.
Who, I'm sorry, do you have the second?
Tim did second it, so we're talking about G and H, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, I'll have to come back through to I through K. I believe it's time for the public hearing. It is. Alright, I'm going to go down to the hearings. Item A, public progress hearing for the community development grant received by the Hot Springs ambulance service. And I am opening the hearing right now. Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. My name is Bill Lass. I'm a planner with the Black Hills Council of Local Governments for Rapid City.
Can I ask you to be more of a rock star and snuggle up to that mic?
Little bit closer, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Bill Lass. I'm a planner with the Black Hills Council of Local Governments. I've been working with the city and the ambulance service for the past several years on some of the funding needed for the ambulance service construction project that of course is ongoing right now. The funding that we helped, that our agency helped with was Community Development Block Grant or CDVG funding. It's really the only substantial source of grant funds out there for projects like this. So we worked with the ambulance service for a couple of years on a lot of the background, kind of eligibility, eligibility issues for the CDVG program. Once we kind of had all those things worked out, two years ago, I worked with the city in preparing the actual application. In South Dakota, only cities or counties can actually apply for CDVG funds, although you can apply on behalf of eligible sub recipients, so that's what happened in this case. The city actually sponsored the grant on behalf of the ambulance service. We're very fortunate, we received, or the city received, I should say, a $412,000 CDVG to the Governor's Office of Economic Development that was awarded in 2014. So with the CDVG program, there's a lot of administrative requirements, a lot of strings attached to that program. And one of the things that has to be done is there's a couple of public hearings throughout the process. We actually held one of those when we applied for the grant and now tonight we have to hold the second of those. It's called a public progress hearing. And it's a pretty simple thing, but in just a second, I'm going to turn it over to the ambulance service. But basically, we just need to give you and the city an update on the construction progress, on the project. And then once we've done that, you have to formally ask for public comments or-
And I will, I will.
So I guess with that, I'll turn it over to Randy.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, I'm Randy Stonebaum, president of our Hot Springs Ambulance Service. And if you live in our city, you can see that our building has been going up outside of here and hopefully by the middle of April is when the construction is supposed to be concluded. We've been on board and it's going to be, I think, a wonderful asset for the community. So I guess I'm open to any questions anybody have about the project or ongoing with it.
What percentage of completeness do we have?
The structure itself, the wood, the walls and stuff are up on it inside and the drywall's going up right now. Plumbing, heating's all going together as well as electrical. Like I said, the completion date is supposed to be the middle of April. I think it's probably going to be a little bit longer than that because of, well, anytime you get a building this size and in complexity, there's always issues that come up with it. That is not going to be the color that it is right now. I'll tell people, I've heard that question a few times. That is just a preliminary and there's going to be siding that's going to really enhance the hospital in the area that we're in.
That's a good question.
Yes.
When do you plan to be moving and what will happen to the old facility?
Okay, we won't move until the new facility is ready. You need us to say.
And you don't know when that might be?
The building's supposed to be done by April 15th. I'm suspecting that we're going to be the first to May, maybe the middle of May before we move. The building and the property that it sits on right now, legally it is, when we finish, it comes back into our ownership. It'll have to be appraised and then it'll be put up for bids.
Thank you. What percent of complete did you estimate you're at?
All the wood structure's up, but I'm thinking that we're probably 50, 60 percent complete on it, you know? There's a lot of wiring in the walls and the heating and air conditioning's all going in. And the last time with the structure, they didn't quite have all the woodwork up, but the woodwork itself, all the outside shell is 100 percent up. Anything else?
Counsel, any other questions for Randy? Alright, that I would formally like to ask the public for any concerns, questions, or comments regarding this project. Please come to the mic.
Tim, got it, understood. Just, Randy, heaven forbid it would happen. Let's say the ambulance service dissolved. Who owns the building?
The ambulance building?
Yeah.
Our corporation.
And the corporation is a-
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit, private corporation? So the city is the vehicle that this grant money comes through to go to a nonprofit?
That's correct.
But the building and that is owned by the service?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to clarify, then I've expressed that in the past and people say, no, it's a city building. It is not.
It is not a city building. The city sold it to them before me.
Well, in the old building, I happened to have built some of the original structure. And I don't know if that was put up as the district or the service, to be honest, because they formed the district at that time and that was implicit for funding that building when it went up. It is a services or is it a district?
When the building originally went up, the service is the one that was a sponsoring agency. There was some problems with the funding and they sold it to the district for a dollar. And all the legal work where they did the changes and with ownership has all been followed through. And where it sits right now is like I said, when we're finished with it, it comes back to our ownership and according to codified law, it has to be appraised and then it has to be put up for bids.
And it's my understanding that you're planning to use the funds from the sale of the current ambulance shed, as we call it, to help fund your new facility.
That's correct.
I think this will clarify the questions and the concerns I've heard in the public as to what's what. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking that because I've been asked that and that's why I know the answer. Because it was owned by the city, but it has not been for several years. Are there any other questions or concerns from the public? Does that satisfy what we need to do, Bill?
It does, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
We move to close airing.
Second name?
Thank you. Alright, we have officially closed the hearing on the community development grant. Thank you, guys, and thank you, first responders. Appreciate your service to Hot Springs. I'm going to go back up to item A, I'm sorry, I through J and K of personnel as a group.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, we're done with personnel, we're done with the hearing. I'm now going to ordinances. Second reading, Chapter 27-A dot 06 dot 05, parking requirements. This has been discussed extensively. Kim Barbieri, our city planner, has provided some additional information about existing businesses that will be affected based on which way the vote goes this evening. She's also given you the proposed ordinance 1163. So if somebody gives me a motion, we'll discuss.
I will make the motion to approve.
Second name?
Now, any discussion? If you would like to discuss, please come after the mic. State your name and address.
My name is Uriah Lawland, 2244 Minicotta. I haven't been here at the previous readings of this new ordinance, but I have had the opportunity to read it and I'd like to make some comment upon it, if that's alright.
Please do.
First of all, I question what is the purpose behind not only this ordinance, but the former ordinance? Is it taking the present conditions of residences and businesses and then bringing them into some, someone's concept or a group of people's concept of what should be? I think that's inappropriate. Because if you want something to change on your own property, in your own residence, that's totally appropriate. But to forcibly by law change somebody else's residence or their business is not appropriate. If it's for safety, I would like to bring up the fact that while environmental things like parking and spacings may apply to some degree to safety, but safety is more determined by individual actions and that's, and we need to think about that. If this is ordinance or this, the purpose for this whole thing is to make business opportunities more attractive in our city, I can tell you that even though I don't own a business, I do live here, but it makes it less attractive to a business to come in here and to be forcibly asked to do things on their property, which they may or may not have the economic ability to do so. And even more so, according to this ordinance, if they were to enlarge their business or make changes, it also creates economic difficulty for them. And I think that's inappropriate. Then I have to question who is behind an ordinance of this type, which requires very detailed, almost micro-management type of situation of what materials they use, how many spaces. It's incredibly detailed. One has to question if the people behind this have some connection with the asphalt, concrete contracting business because that's what they're requiring these people to do. I also wonder if, and this ordinance certainly makes it possible for if someone didn't like someone else, to use the rule of law to bludgeon them maliciously, to create them economic hardship by bringing up this ordinance and causing them trouble. And that is also inappropriate. So I would like to ask the council not only to rescind the entire ordinance as it stands and reject the 11, excuse me if I'm wrong, 1136, is it?
1163.
1163, excuse me. As you ordered, 1163. And rethink this based on some alternatives. And those alternatives would be this. Let's think about this in terms of dealing with parking spaces and businesses and residences on a free market basis. For instance, if you had a very small house and you only had a one-car parking driveway and you wanted to add a sunroom or a kitchen, this ordinance would require you to increase your driveway size and do it with asphalt or concrete. And you may or may not wish to do that. You would do it, however, if you wanted to sell your house and it was more attractive to sell because you had a larger driveway. That's the free market. The free market that drives that kind of thing is the way we ought to be operating, not by forcing, by the rule of law. Another alternative way would be to approach this kind of thing, parking and parking spaces, not by this very minutia detail of how many lots or how many parking spaces or how far from your building, but approach it on a conflict resolution. If a conflict comes up and there's complaint, that you have an avenue for resolution between people that have that conflict, instead of burdening everybody with an ordinance. It's inappropriate.
Can I just ask you a quick question? Are you aware of the ordinance that this replaces?
I'm, I think that ought to be rescinded and we ought to start over. I'm asking the council to think about it.
Are you aware of the ordinance that this replaces or would enhance or-
Is it, if it's, if it's one on paper, if it's the one here that everything is crossed out, yes. Is that the former ordinance?
I cannot see what you're holding in your hand. I'm just saying that I believe the intent and Kim, correct me, please, if I'm wrong. But this was designed to be less restricted than the previous ordinance.
And I'm finding even this one is too restricted.
So if this doesn't pass, then we still have the other ordinance in place.
Well, what I'm asking is the council rescind the original and rethink this one.
That's not on the agenda. We have to stick with 1163 for tonight.
Okay, I understand that.
Alright.
But let me put that out to consider, maybe to rescind the entire old ordinance altogether as well. And approach a new system of government that deals on the basis of free market, conflict resolution, and dealing with things so that we don't use the rule of law to force people to do things that they are neither capable economically or wish to do. Give them the freedom to operate their business or their residence the way they wish to do because they're going to do it which is best for their customers and to make, and is safe and is possible for them. And I don't think that we need to micromanage our community in this manner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Any other comments from the public? Before we go to, or from the council, of course.
Do we have a motion on the second?
I do, that's why we were allowed to go into discussions.
Can we hear from Kim?
Pardon?
Can you hear from Kim?
Sure. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Kim Barbieri, I'm the planning administrator. Just one clarification from the last person's interpretation. This does not apply to any one or two family residents. And neither does the old one. That was never on the document.
And could you please share with us who provided this proposal?
The proposal, I think I went over this at the last meeting, but it's a short history of it. Whenever I was approached about using this particular ordinance to make some changes at one business property, I had to look at the effects that it would have on numerous properties. It was an ordinance that had not been enforced systematically throughout the city. It was one that was picked and chose on. Some people were allowed to be enforced by it, other people didn't have to. Whenever I looked at it and with my 16 years of experience in code enforcement, I did realize that the ability for municipality to go back to a business, including like a multifamily, which would be run as an apartment building or a situation like that, to go back to a business that was operating legally in the community, following all the rules and having accepted all those rules at the time of its inception, going back to them later and saying, okay, now you have to do- going back to them later and saying, okay, now you have to do X, Y, and Z. And it could be anything from paving or painting your building black or putting up a new kind of sign that we like better than the old one. All those things are not considered a fair business transaction. From an outside's person, if I was going to be looking to move a business into this community, I would look through your regulations and I would say, flag up, this is a community that feels that a handshake is not enough, that I know at any given time, they might come back at me for other things. It would make me really rethink my ability to move there. So what I did was, I had my concerns and I just posed them to the, our new city attorney, it was Sarah Frankenstein. Sarah reviewed that against stark codified law and other laws that have been upheld in the South Dakota state courts and determined that it was an unfair practice. And sat down with me and started making legislative changes to this ordinance to take the section out that allowed us to go back to existing businesses and make them do changes. At that time, took the immediate idea to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission agreed unanimously that we should look at this particular ordinance. They saw that it had been used spottedly, I guess. And we set forth in having a working session to make some changes. We held a public hearing there. We had very good public support at that public hearing. Had a lot of good conversation, made some more changes. We went through four iterations to get the language right. At the first reading, we did have one word change that Caroline asked to put in to help clarify things. But at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we were able to pass it unanimously with a recommendation to the city council for approval. It came forward at the last meeting with a public hearing and a first reading. We did have a lengthy discussion at that time. We did make the changes that were asked for. And we're here at the second reading. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have on a technical basis. The overall general nature of this particular ordinance has not changed other than the fact that if you were going to put in a new business, starting from scratch with a whole new building and the full package, we clarified what was going to be required there. And for those that are existing right now that do not meet the requirement, we clarified that you were not in jeopardy. You were not in a situation where we could come back on you. And I do want to make sure that it's clear. I had gotten some questions between the last reading and now, that this does not include any businesses in the general commercial zone, which would be all of our downtown area. This only would be businesses in our highway service areas, mixed-use industrial or industrial zones.
And it's not for private residential?
Not for private, not for one or two.
But you speak into your mic, Krista, you have a very gentle voice.
Yes, she does.
Not for private residential?
Correct. It states at the very beginning that one and two-family residences are not included. The reason why they usually pick that instead of like three-family, once you hit three-family, that's where either fire code and other commercial building codes start kicking in for, say, deeper structures. So that's always the cutoff point when we include or not include.
I just have one. And it's a silly question.
No such.
Sure, but, okay, the very last paragraph, you added one and two-family residences and new businesses. In the previous, it was one and two-family residents and businesses. Are we leaving out old businesses and just making it new businesses? Or does that matter?
That was the change that you had asked.
Yes, I did. I meant to add new businesses. But are, do we need old businesses included in this? Or is just the one and two-family residences and new businesses? Is that all we need there?
If you, I thought you just wanted to change it to new businesses. It would literally, how it was intended was all businesses that go through a change. If you're a new business, you're going to be
Right.
Going through that whole process from the beginning.
I think I was thinking more of a new business in an old building.
I don't know how we can clarify that, just a deeper resistance.
Would it be just all businesses? I don't know. Like I said, it's a silly question. I just.
No, I'm sure. No, well, see, all businesses within the GC zone have been exempt from the beginning in this particular document. They talk about.
So they're exempt anyone?
They're exempt anyone.
Okay. All right, then he's fine the way it stands.
It would be fine the way it stands, yes.
I just wanted to be sure.
It was a little, just a word twist there.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thanks Caroline. Any other questions before we go to a vote from anybody? Thank you, Kim, appreciate it. I need you to come back to the mic. We videotape our meetings and the best way to pick you up is at a mic. Thank you.
I'm happy to. I guess I'm a little confused. I heard that this does not involve any residential, but I'm going to read it to you right here where it does. It starts out with A, off-street parking requirements. In all districts except the general GC district, there shall be provided, anytime any building or structure is erected or enlarged or increased capacity, off-street parking space for automobiles in accordance with the following requirements. Then if you turn to 10.9, the minimum number of off-street parking spaces shall be determined in accordance with the following dwellings. One-family and two-family, two spaces per dwelling unit. Now, that's residential.
Our parking requirements always list every particular use so that you know what's the minimums required. If a subdivision were to come in, they would know exactly how many spaces they were able to provide per unit. The section that he was reading under section nine does not apply to the existing property paving section. The paving section starts at, I'm trying to catch up with you guys here. The hard part about this is it's, it's the parking requirements for everything. So it deals with the parking requirements that's required for all things. And then where it goes into the section that we had the existing parking. I don't have the edited copy. We got rid of that whole section that had to do with the existing, existing parking being required to do, existing businesses being required to have paved parking if they did not. That part is not in here anymore. And that's the overall thing. The stuff that's left is basically saying, if you have a single-family house, you have to provide this. We never once say that it's required to be paved. We, that's never been a part of this. And the GC zone, one and two-family residences are always exempt from any type of paving, even if it's new.
So this section is only talking about spaces?
It's only talking about the required spaces, not that you had to pave them. Yeah, we're talking paving, it's just the actual spaces.
Thanks for the clarification.
All the votes?
Does someone else have a question? Okay. I can't see everybody out there in the shade. All right. All in favor of ordinance 1164?
It's going to be a roll call vote.
Okay, please do.
Carl Ashley?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
No.
Caroline Swartzinbach?
Yes.
Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
Yes.
Krista Spillane?
Yes.
Thank you, the ayes have it.
All right, motion carried. Thank you all. I know this was a tough one and I appreciate you taking the time.
I've got a question.
We are done with that one.
I'd like to know how Kara Hagan can vote because this affects her business. Same way as Spillane or whatever name is, because she works for Kara. So how can you do one of those older ones?
It's an ordinance. It's not.
Still, it affects her business, so it's conflict interest.
I believe the ordinance affects all businesses, both current and future.
So they shouldn't be able to vote.
As of now, the ayes have it. We won't follow up with the concern of the citizen and provide interpretation.
What was it? Six to one?
Yes.
Well, then that would require that nobody vote because we all work for businesses.
We don't own businesses.
Why don't you either?
You work for Kara Hagan, don't you?
Well, someone works for the city of Hot Springs.
Really?
You guys all own homes, correct?
Yeah, and isn't.
We'll look into the concern. And if there's an issue, we'll bring it to the council. Thank you.
I'll call the state myself.
Please do.
I will.
Are you done, correct?
Yes.
You didn't come to the mic, so I'm not sure.
Well, I was going to.
If you're just venting or if you actually want to come to the mic and share with us.
I was going to, but you said, no, it's closed. So I wanted to, what's my? But thank you.
Everybody here is a property owner, just about, I think.
Yeah, but not everybody, there's a business owner.
So I can't.
I believe we've covered the matter. We'd like to move on to the other.
Resolutions, 2016-4, bridge re-inspection program. We do this every other year. We would like the council's permission to do it on schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Before discussion begins, I do want to point out clarification. In your council notes, it states 10% of the cost to the cities. The actual resolution states 20%. The total number is 20%. That is the accurate figure. That is set by the state per their program.
So we are voting to approve spending 20% of the cost of the inspection.
And we do have a motion right now from the council. We just want to know.
I'll second.
Second.
Andrew. Do you have your motion and your second? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. It's a good thing to do. Georgia, I think you have been in finances next week. Airport, we already, we have an airport. I'll just speak for you, Georgia. We have an airport public meeting on March 10th, which I believe is Thursday at 6:00 PM at City Hall to go over our master plan with our engineer. So Georgia's a little under the weather, so I'll just speak for her. And if you have an interest in our airport and our master plan, please join us at City Hall at 6:00 PM on the 10th. I'm going to move to Chamber of Commerce, Kara.
We haven't had a meeting. Our next meeting is noon on the 16th. We have had a tourism meeting that we've been working on a slogan for Hot Springs. And if anybody wants that information, it's been posted on, I believe, city sites and also the chamber sites incorporated with our, what we're doing with the Black Hill State University study brought together with the community engagement. And I just have to say that I'm really happy with the way the chamber and the city's working together on this one. And thank you to those from council that have showed up to the community engagement meetings and attended the Black Hill State University study.
All right, thank you Kara. Waste management is until later. Caroline, did you have a historic reservation?
We did. We met on March the 2nd. We get preliminary approval by the commission for daily bread windows, CBH coop windows, the hub sign. There was an application for a door presented for 802 Elm Street. That was unanimously approved. An application for the sign at Artisans Market on North River Street. That was also approved. Mr. Leich and Ms. Barberi have provided information about the Red Rock River Resort windows. They're working on that. And that's all.
Great. Thank you Caroline. Appreciate you keeping our city hopeful. Back to you, Kara Evans Planch.
All right, well, we have our meeting next on the third Thursday, and that's at 7:00 PM at the Evans Planch upstairs. So we haven't had a meeting yet, but we still have volunteer days on Tuesday. Hope to see you then.
All right, thank you. Krista, the parks meeting today.
We did have a parks meeting today.
Please speak into your mic.
We did have a parks meeting today. And we discussed, can you hear me? Yeah, okay. Discuss, I gotta set this up so I can see it. The covered storage for stage for Centennial Parks with the arts and crafts, the bid going out 4/4/16. It was agreed not to go forward with the actual construction until after the arts and crafts 40th anniversary because they really felt that that would be too much going on during the 40th anniversary. But instead, we will, they did talk about creating a sign that we'll tie the arts and crafts, the stage to the arts and crafts. And that will say something into the, about it coming soon, the stage coming soon, if this is approved by council. Two different plans were made to go out for bid, one being the one with all the bells and whistles and one being one that is much cost more efficient. So that's what we discussed as far as the Centennial Park. The final review was done for the city draft ordinance. The park's name and signage was discussed for all the parks. It was recommended that we go forward with a aluminum sign that would be on both sides, that would be like the signage for the rest of the, so it all kind of matches with the other signs around town and with the DOT that's coming through. And the ones in the parks that are more visible, like Centennial or Welcome Park, would probably have a little bit upgraded on that so that they'd be a little more attractive. And then we also talked about the Welcome Park gazebo. A site plan is being planned with a site tour walking off the acreage, weather permitting. We're not quite sure when that would be. And then Tracy has been working on plans to make all soccer fields regulation up at Butler Park following the tall grass plan. Once the plan is determined, we'll, we'll put this out for bids for the part that we can't do in-house. You know, a lot of the stuff we can do in-house, but some of the stuff we will have to go out for bid. So we discussed the grant to continue with the trails in side Butler Park according to the tall grass plan. And then we also discussed the tree trimming by the DOC. And that will take place from the Dip Bridge to University and from the Dip Bridge to the Mueller Center. And they'll trim the trees.
Still working on time. That's along the riverside, not along the roadways, but along the riverside. DOC is Department of Corrections using skills in a label.
And then we, I came and I visited with Olivia about what's coming up here at the Mueller Center. And we talked about the, they had the Little Miss Hot Springs and that it was well-attended. And the school play, Chickenheart is the 17th and 18th, Thursday, Friday and Friday at 7:00 PM. The International Strings Trio is at 7:30 on the 10th of March. That's a Thursday. And the Chamber Dinner is this, the 12th. At 5:00 and 6:00 is the show, social hour, and 6:00 is when the food will be out. And then I want to remind everybody that the Glenn Miller Band is coming, is coming here on, at 7:00 o'clock. And that's April 12th, that's April 12th. And that a lot of tickets have already been sold, but there still are an awful lot out there. And we hope that this is a success because if it's not, you know, this is kind of a lot of expense to pay for this. So we really are encouraging you to buy tickets and enjoy the Glenn Miller Orchestra. And that's all I have.
Thanks Krista.
To clarify, that expense is the Chamber of Commerce that purchased this, not the city.
Yeah, right.
Thank you for the clarification.
That's it, we do encourage you to.
I also want to, to anybody who says there's nothing going on in Hot Springs, she just proved, I mean, that's just March and that's in one place.
Yeah.
There's a lot going on here.
What's the welcome?
What's the Welcome Park gazebo?
The gazebo was donated by the state veterans home. And we're going to kind of... We've done some of the-
Where is it?
Where is it? I don't know.
Amazing shop.
City shop. Okay. I don't think I've seen it.
It was brought in from Attle Junction.
Okay. All right. I know that's that one. Yeah, okay. Where are you going to put it?
At Welcome Park.
Welcome Park. Where's Welcome Park?
From Evans Plunge.
Cross Evans Plunge.
I could know that was Welcome Park.
You gotta get signs, don't you?
Thank you.
All right, thank you both. Appreciate the questions. And Ms. Barbieri, P N Z.
We still have you on for this one. Just a real quick update for the P N Z. We've been actually having a couple of slow days where we were just dealing with some small neighborhood things. But the larger point that we're dealing with right now is the comp plan. We're having a specialized comp plan meeting with the group of volunteers that had signed up. We had a great group, sixteen people that signed up. This is going to be our second meeting. It'll be Wednesday, two days from now, on the ninth at five thirty at City Hall. So we're still welcoming everybody to be involved who wants to be involved. What we're doing is we're going over all the different categories of what's going to be covered in the comp plan, getting down specific people in the neighbors, in the neighborhood and in the city limits that, or even regionally, that would be great resources for us. And the basic questions that we're asking over each topic is where were we? Where did we come from? Where are we now and where do we want to be? Very simple, but it's a really strong tool. And unlike most communities, this is coming a hundred percent directly from our citizenry. So the more citizens we can get involved, the better it's going to be. And I just look forward to seeing all the new volunteers come in and get involved.
Thank you, Kim. And thanks to everybody who's working with her. We haven't updated this since nineteen eighty-three?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one. So it's a major effort. And we really appreciate your effort and those supporting you, even you, Don. All right, Mr. Tesher, public safety.
Full meeting.
How about Public Works?
Yeah, we did have one.
All right.
Went over some estimates for some concrete work to be done around town. There are several jobs. We're going to take each one on an individual. That way, we don't run into scheduling and weather and all that sort of stuff. So we're going to deal with each job as a separate deal. We've got a proposal for an engineering group to go through to be here part-time. When we install eight, install the sludge de-watering system. These are the engineers that actually designed that system. So of course, as usual, any time an engineer is involved, there's a little extra money involved, but it's not all that much. And that way, they'll be here while it's being installed rather than us trying to run back and forth to wrap it or whatever. Talk about Boulder Falls Special Assessment Process. There's a motion. I believe there's a hearing on that tonight.
Where's that hearing?
Also, we discussed solar lighting for the Welcome Sign on Highway eighteen west. I understand there's some matching funds for that. And when more or less we decide we go ahead, the city's part of this will be about sixteen hundred dollars. It'll be a complete solar lighting system for that sign. Pavilion, of course, that's been delayed. Sixteenth Street, that's one of... That's a sewer problem we'll be doing in-house. Houston is one of those that is an ongoing type thing. We've discussed that. It's... We kind of run into, when they built the hospital out there, we run into a big pipe running into a little pipe. And that's as that development on that end of town gets bigger and we have more usage, we're going to have to do something with that. The loading dock...
The water station.
The building, the water loading dock is built. The building is done. All we need to do now is to start getting stuff built out there to get it set on. And we did have one complaint for our new garbage pickup people, but I believe they're handling that. So that was it.
All right, thank you. Golf course is open. I'll just say that, Georgia. This great weather we've been having, we actually had several people do some rounds over the weekend. And courses, of course, beautiful. And we're open as long as the weather permits. Ms. Kramer, tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, seven o'clock, Volunteer Fire Department.
Volunteer Fire Department. Very impressive group of guys. I've really enjoyed going to their meeting. And I look forward to going to it tomorrow night, seven o'clock at their new building. And we'll also be discussing the contract. Ready?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Andrea. She'll have more next time.
Not much to say.
All right. Thank you for all the committee reports. New business, information only. Bid opening for Centennial Park Covered Stage rescheduled for the fourth of April. That got moved out of the meeting.
I'd like to clarify, there's something on that. And I'd like to have someone to correct me if I'm wrong. But the way that the motion was made at our last meeting is that we were going out for bids. That does not, in my way of thinking, does not mean that we are definitely going to build this thing. The reason I voted to go out for bids is because nobody could give me a price. So until we get money involved, I'm going to withhold my opinion on it. Also, I have several other questions as to who's going to run this thing and who's going to pay for the guests and all this. I keep hearing about all these musicians and stuff, they're coming. Most of them are starving, but they still don't work for nothing. So I still have a few questions, but I just want to make sure that the people know that I've put a little bit of thought into this before I vote one way or the other. So when it comes time to accept the bids, I'm going to want some answers before I vote whether we accept it or not. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. And we do have the Arts of Grass Festival Committee coming on the fourth to share. They were at the parks meeting today and very interested in how that progressed. So they'll probably give you some answers to your questions on the fourth. Okay, I'm going to go to item B. I need a motion to set a hearing for the resolution of necessity for the assessment of properties located within the Boulder Falls development.
So I'll make that motion.
I'll let you figure that out, Misty.
Second.
So we would like to set that hearing for March twenty-first at seven P.M. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Was there an opposed?
Here, abstained. All others in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. I did you, Georgia, though.
Hi, I'm Sarah.
Okay, thank you. Item C, motion to accept sealed bids for the log pile at the golf course. Bid opening scheduled for the twenty-first of March. We're doing this again because the pile was modified in the middle of people viewing it. And also, we had people giving us bids based on terms that we did not actually put out for the bid. And I forget the term. What is it?
Cord.
Cord. We received bids based on cord, and that is... It's totally based on, this is the pile of logs.
The language does ask if you are interested in bidding or if you know someone that is to give a set amount, not bid by cord. We like to keep it apples to apples, and if we have to estimate a cord, then we become impartial judges in the matter.
Cord is a finite amount, and that's not how we are requesting the bids. So I need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Should get that pile sold soon. Hopefully. All right, item G. Motion... Oh, my gosh. Motion to surplus nine blue chairs and two blue couches from Evans Plunge upstairs break room, and they are lovely.
So both, and we're not combining D, E, and F.
Well, I already did D. We can combine E and F.
Did you have a second?
With D.
Caroline?
I will. Okay, so I have a motion and second on the nine blue chairs and the two blue couches. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E and F are both items at the Plunge. Metal dumbbell set and...
You can do it through H.
Through H. Okay, so E through H, surplusing items, all in favor? Well, boys and girls, all of that.
Motion by Kim. Would you like to move the second still?
Got it.
You're in the motion, actually.
Well, I heard Andrea first, but it doesn't... You guys can argue. You have a motion and a second, correct? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We've got stuff for sale. All right. Item I, motion to approve. Maybe we can do I and J.
Yes.
We have a request for Ms. Barbieri and Ms. Summers-Walton.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Ms. Mashin, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we got through there. Misty, finance officer report, please.
Thank you, council, for approving the travel request for Finance Officer School. And I appreciate the support that I get constantly from you to continue to educate myself in the role. And I want to let you know I appreciate that. I will have our annual report available by our next meeting, March twenty-first. We got a thirty-day extension, but we don't need it all. So I will have that report to all of you by the next meeting. And I plan on doing a brief review at Admin Finance on the fourteenth, if anyone is interested in coming to that meeting. It's at City Hall at one P.M. one. We have nominating petitions available at City Hall for our open seats. As you know, we have a mayor's seat available and four council seats. And we're having a joint election on June seventh. Nominating petitions can be picked up and circulated, and they're due back by the twenty-ninth of March. We have our district meeting this month, so I'm going to finalize the R S V Ps that I've received from each of you by the ninth. If anybody has not R S VP'ed with me that's interested in going to our district meeting in Hill City on March twenty-third at six P.M., please let me know. I have good attendance already. I'm excited for that. And then we have the Chamber banquet. I didn't hear about that yet, but March twelfth is our annual Chamber banquet for all those interested in attending. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Misty. Nolan provided a list of all the things he's working on. Do you want to buzz through that a little?
I'll read every word, just word for word for the next half hour. So sit tight and enjoy.
No.
If you do have questions, though, council, please reach out. We'd be happy to further explain what you have in front of you. It's about fourteen items long. I'll hit on three of the high notes because the Chamber banquet's already been referenced now twice. Evans Plunge, we do have a March membership special ongoing. That's a full month of March. Also, we have an Easter buy one, get one half off admission special there. So we certainly are trying new things to incentivize more revenue, more business there. And part of March's events is a membership drive for the spring and then also the Easter events. And we are open on Easter Day this year, which is different than years past. So that's for the public's knowledge there. Tim mentioned with Public Works, or sorry, Councilmember Tesher mentioned with Public Works, concrete projects. There'll be no real disruptions to public traffic except for work being done on the Old Dairy Queen Dip Bridge. That's just the street outside of this building here. If you travel on that, you'll notice some areas are in need of repair, and so we're looking to do that. We may have to do a full closure for the Dip Bridge, but ideally with the contractor, we're looking to do a partial half length or half roof closure so you can still use that if need be. That should be upcoming the next week or two weeks. Also, we have work occurring on the Freedom Trail nearby where the Dip Bridge is at. The pot, the swimming area where there's a lot of undermining of the sidewalk and where the deep spot is for kids to swim. We're going to be, per the grant we received last year, doing modifications there for a more stable bank, doing a rock wall exterior against the riverbed and doing a dyed concrete blended in with the rocks with a more permanent bank solution. So that might affect those using the trail for pedestrian traffic. We'll have to do two panels of new concrete there. Other two items is if you have signed up for recycling, residential recycling, you should have received your canister by now. If you have not, please contact City Hall. We'll be in touch with you. We'll get that for you. Our pickup days are going to be once a month, and that is the last Wednesday of the month. If you are participating, you should have received a letter from the city giving the project details or the program details. If you have further questions, though, give us a call. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Or if you have not yet signed up and would like to, we can still enroll you at any point during our contract with the new hauler. And then lastly, and I'll plug this again, is we are hiring for many physicians, two full-time physicians currently, also many seasonal physicians, including anywhere from Evans Plunge, the golf course, to our maintenance department. So also summer reps, too. We're hiring quite a bit of summer rep. So if you're in need of a job or know someone's looking for work, whether full-time, part-time, have them check out our website or stop down at City Hall for an application. We'd be happy to correct them to what might fit their skill set. That is all.
Thank you. We're keeping busy. And I do want to thank the City Hall staff especially for preparing for this meeting. We did it in an hour, but it's been, in some cases, months of work. And I do want to recognize their efforts. I want to thank the council for preparing for this meeting. Again, we buzzed right through it, but there's a lot of things that they had to review to be able to vote on these items tonight, and I do appreciate your preparation. On a good note, Evans Plunge passed with a hundred percent of their Department of Health surprise inspection. That's hard to do. So I do want to recognize the staff at the Plunge for their hard work in making it a safe and healthy place. I also want to thank our law enforcement officers for participating with the SWAT team. Personally, it was a blast for me, if I can use that term. But I have to say, it was very rewarding to see the biggest smiles I've seen in a long time on some guys' faces. They love to blow stuff up, right, John? John got to go to, and it was a very fun day. But it was also a very important day, and we are privileged that the state chose Hot Springs to do this testing. And we all benefit from our law enforcement being more highly trained. And we have on our Facebook page a brief video about it, but I've got some really cool video on my phone, too, if you want to see that. But...
Oh, and Andrew was there, too. It was a fun day.
So again, just thank you all for attending and sharing your thoughts. We do appreciate that. And I'm done.
Most of you adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all again.